Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 17th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. March 17th, as you know, is St. Patrick's Day. I went to Mass this morning at St. Mary's Church, which is our neighbor, and Father Patrick Shields had the Mass. And as it concluded, he gave us the Irish blessing. And he also said, according to the Irish, there are only two kinds of people in the world today. Those who are Irish, and those who wish they were, or maybe want to be. Ted has approved this comment from Lorraine County Leadership, Lorraine County today, so I will say it to you. Well done is better than well said. Madam Clerk?
At 10:15, there will be a public hearing on the 15th Alley, Alariah Township, and there will be a presentation at 10:30 for Main Street Consortiums. Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advance, there is one advance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advance, there is one advance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, approve CT Consultants Willoughby, Ohio, to prepare Lorraine County's CHIP fiscal year 2005 grant application in the amount not to exceed $4,700 to be paid from account 001012502450101. Three proposals were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize an extension of time to Wilbur Smith Associates in order to complete the text preparation for the environmental strategic plan. This extension of time is through April 15, 2005.
Jim, do you want to comment as all about that? Please.
Commissioner, I lost track of which one.
I'm on number 13, the environmental strategic plan. It's an extension of time.
Oh, okay. Mr. Twining, who is unfortunately out ill this week, has submitted a request that we give them a little more additional time. It will not cost us any more money. They just weren't able to gain all the materials they needed to make the proper presentation to us. And he recommends that we go ahead and do that. He's comfortable that by the end of the month, we should be able to get our report.
Was this for water and sewer?
Hmm...
I think it dealt with both issues.
Yeah, I...
There was sewer and there's...
I don't recall the specific issues, Commissioner, so I don't want to really comment on it. Based upon the strength of Mr. Twining's recommendation, I allowed it to go on the agenda. I didn't think it was that large an issue, so I apologize. We don't have that information.
It definitely dealt with the sanitary sewer.
Right.
It gave us the basis to move forward.
Kelly Glenn's here. I don't know if she's going to need input.
Do you, can you respond to Commissioner Laurie's question?
From the memo that, can you hear me? Okay. From the memo that Mr. Twining did, it's dealing with the two issues of providing sanitary sewers and stormwater management for the county.
Stormwater, okay.
Thank you, Kelly. You're welcome.
Okay. We need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, amend Resolution Number 04-480 adopted June 24, 2004, approving an enter into various purchase and service contracts for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. This amendment is a housekeeping measure to include the following language. Authorize the Director of Job and Families to execute contracts in behalf of the Commissioners with Prosecutor's approval as due form, and set payment for services to be made within the amount set above for contracts or subcontracts.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Workforce Development Agency, amend Resolution Number 04-456 adopted June 17, 2004, approving an enter into contract between Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency and Workforce Institute, Lorraine County, for fiscal year 2005, for the purchase of Wia Services in the amount of $1,545,001. Said amount, said amendment is necessary to increase the contract amount to $2,319,710, an increase of $774,709. And the funding source for increase is the Workforce Investment Act, due to the release of Kirian Funding Form prior contract year as required by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services.
Jim, you want to just speak to that briefly?
Certainly, Commissioner. There were some additional funds that were available. The money for Wia comes in two-year blocks, so that's kind of interesting funding. It's a lot easier, more fluid to use. So they're just moving the money forward from the prior year to allocate this year for more services for our residents here in the community. Mr. Ogilvy wasn't here to be, wasn't able to be here this morning, but he did discuss the matter, and it's more housekeeping than anything else. So it doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't include any additional liability to the county's general fund or any obligation thereafter.
Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve and expand an operating agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Fifth Third Bank to provide Visa and MasterCard merchant services for Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court. Three bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Any costs that are associated with this agreement will be paid from account 131011401490101.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineering, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for cable road signal at Midview High School. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 21st and 28th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on April 5th in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room, and the estimated cost is $64,046.15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is there a traffic signal there now?
No.
Or has there been a traffic study done to constitute a traffic light there?
I don't know about that latter part. They have a turn lane at the school, it's at Grafton Road.
Right. Normally, they do have to do a traffic study to be able to approve the turn light. We could always get that information to find out. I don't think that this is something, if you want to wait and take a look at that, I don't think this is an emergency issue.
I think we should hold off until the traffic study is done on that.
I'll talk with Mr. Carney this afternoon and see what information he has. If you want to put it on, on a whole business next week, and I'll see what I can get for you, okay?
Thank you.
Betty, you made the motion.
Well, I'll, with... Resent, draw my motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Second.
And you'll report back to us for next week, then?
Absolutely.
Under the TB Clinic, authorize various appointments or reappointments of members to Lorraine County TB Clinic Board of Trustees, appoint Dr. Imron N. Earn, I'm not sure if I've said that right, but...
Karen.
Effective March 17, 2005, expiring October 5, 2007, filling the unexpired term of Virginia Gaston, and reappoint Edward Higgins, effective April 17, 2005, expiring April 16, 2008.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineering, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for cable road signal at Midview High School. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 21st and 28th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on April 5th in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room, and the estimated cost is $64,046.15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is there a traffic signal there now?
No.
Or has there been a traffic study done to constitute a traffic light there?
I don't know about that latter part. They have a turn lane at the school, it's at Grafton Road.
Right. Normally, they do have to do a traffic study to be able to approve the turn light. We could always get that information to find out. I don't think that this is something, if you want to wait and take a look at that, I don't think this is an emergency issue.
I think we should hold off until the traffic study is done on that.
I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Carney this afternoon and see what information he has. If you want to put it on, on a whole business next week, and I'll see what I can get for you, okay?
Thank you.
Betty, you made the motion.
Well, I'll, with... Resent, draw my motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Second.
And you'll report back to us for next week, then?
Absolutely.
Under the TB Clinic, authorize various appointments or reappointments of members to Lorraine County TB Clinic Board of Trustees, appoint Dr. Imron N. Earn, I'm not sure if I've said that right, but...
Karen.
Effective March 17, 2005, expiring October 5, 2007, filling the unexpired term of Virginia Gaston, and reappoint Edward Higgins, effective April 17, 2005, expiring April 16, 2008.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineering, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for cable road signal at Midview High School. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 21st and 28th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on April 5th in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room, and the estimated cost is $64,046.15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is there a traffic signal there now?
No.
Or has there been a traffic study done to constitute a traffic light there?
I don't know about that latter part. They have a turn lane at the school, it's at Grafton Road.
Right. Normally, they do have to do a traffic study to be able to approve the turn light. We could always get that information to find out. I don't think that this is something, if you want to wait and take a look at that, I don't think this is an emergency issue.
I think we should hold off until the traffic study is done on that.
I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Carney this afternoon and see what information he has. If you want to put it on, on a whole business next week, and I'll see what I can get for you, okay?
Thank you.
Betty, you made the motion.
Well, I'll, with... Resent, draw my motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Second.
And you'll report back to us for next week, then?
Absolutely.
Under the TB Clinic, authorize various appointments or reappointments of members to Lorraine County TB Clinic Board of Trustees, appoint Dr. Imron N. Earn, I'm not sure if I've said that right, but...
Karen.
Effective March 17, 2005, expiring October 5, 2007, filling the unexpired term of Virginia Gaston, and reappoint Edward Higgins, effective April 17, 2005, expiring April 16, 2008.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
He's consulting with his right hand. Go ahead to Jerry.
Mr. Innes, Assistant Chief...
I need to discuss a litigation issue with Commissioners in Executive Session.
Thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Cordez?
Yeah, we just thought we'd take care of speeding efficiencies.
Well, excuse me, actually, that's what I was trying to do. I requested that my assistant call out to the Engineers' Office. Since we're going to an Executive Session, possibly that information would be available and be able to be delivered over here, and we could still review that matter at the conclusion of Business Day. So excuse me for stepping off. I have nothing important this morning to speak about, thank you.
That's pretty good, though.
Commissioners' Report.
No report.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kayla and I were at NOAAAC's meeting on Friday, and there were four state representatives there, including the Assistant Majority Floor Leader Larry Flowers, who came to talk about the local government fund. And then, I think they asked for our input. Anyway, they heard from several different venues across the, the floor. There are 38 members of NOAAAC's board, now everybody didn't speak. But when I, when I returned home, I thought, I'm not just going to say what I think, I'm going to commit my thoughts to writing. And I did so, and I've shared copies of my comments with my fellow Commissioners, and I've made copies available for the media this morning. And we also, yesterday, my efficient secretary, administrative assistant, emailed to all the state representatives and senators, copies of this letter, which I thought was quite a feat. And we did send paper copies to those that are listed on there. And to those who got the paper copies, we also sent them a copy of Mayor Fulton's plan for development of the casino project, and a copy of our Lorraine County Community Alliance brochure and what we do. Part of what we're hearing from Columbuses is that they want local governments to work more efficiently and cooperatively together. And my contention is that we in Lorraine County have already started to do, excuse me, to do that. We started doing that nine years ago when we officially formed the alliance. And I'm certainly open to suggestions. I always have been, and, but please don't come and tell me what to do when we've already done it. And please pay attention to what we're doing, because we've set the pace here in Lorraine County on a lot of issues, I think. So that was my song and dance to them. And finally, I, they can solve a lot of their money problems in the state if they keep the 1%, sales tax, and don't cut the funds that they send to us. And I spoke to our Budget Director, and we don't have the exact figures here, because it's been a few years since the county was allowed to implement that 1/4% sales tax. But there's a significant amount of money that goes with recalibrating those machines that register the sales tax. And if that's done all over the state, that can be a tidy sum of money. And it's already been set at that amount of money, and now if the state goes and changes it back to 1/2% instead of 1%, and then they say to all 88 counties, oh, well, solve your own problem, which it appears that that's what they're doing, then, then the counties are forced to look at how they're doing business. And they're not only doing that to the counties, they're doing that to each city, township, and village, and to the libraries. And the libraries, a lot of them have no other source of funding except what the state local government sends to them. And finally, to several of the park districts. So anyway, I put it in writing, and I sent it, and that's my report. Thank you for listening to me.
Clerk's Report, receive and journalize a regular annexation petition for 25.58 acres from Grafton Township to the Village of Grafton. Attorney James N. Taylor is the agent. This hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, May 19, 2005, at 10:15 AM. This is a regular annexation. All I'm doing is receiving and filing so we can start the process. So I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
For Correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anyone? David.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
It's actually, David Ashenhurst, Oberlin, very short thing. Again, I appreciate how easily now the agenda can be downloaded off the website. It's working very smoothly. It doesn't freeze up my machine. I, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate how you both post your correspondence and then waive the reading of it. In some cases, I might even encourage waiving your reading of it privately, in the sense that number 11 on this week's board correspondence is an anonymous letter. And it's an anonymous letter that makes accusations. And I wonder whether your own policy wouldn't suggest that if somebody isn't signing a letter, you don't need, I mean, we don't need to know how much spam you're getting. And I appreciate knowing, in this case, that you're, you're getting such cranky mail. But, but I think in future, probably, you don't have to acknowledge it as official correspondence if somebody won't sign it.
I think Mr. Cordez wants to comment. Before he does, I want to just say to you that if you read the letter, it's worthy of note, anyway, because there's several names that are mentioned in there. And I was going to forward it to our Prosecutor's Office myself, but, well, I think it said in the body of the letter that it, that they had sent it to the Prosecutor's Office as well.
I sent it to them and the sheriff.
Okay.
Since they, they named the wrong county prosecutor also.
Yes. Oh, oh, oh. I thought maybe he was on staff.
And it wasn't a formal one either, so we didn't know where they came up with the name.
I couldn't figure out who it was.
But we did forward over. It mentioned several specific allegations of collusion with our common police judges, county prosecutor, and other county officials. Obviously, none that are in the room right now. But we felt it warranted being sent to the Prosecutor's Office, Sheriff's Department, and over to the courts. I also sent a copy to the Presiding Judge of Common Police, Mr. Zaleski, and just so that they had that information. It was, I didn't give a lot of credibility to it, but it was certainly quite a dramatic letter. So I think that, I think it was, it was necessary to put it on the correspondence.
Okay.
We don't normally do that either, David.
Yes, I don't.
No, I appreciate that. It's just, it's, it's a little bit of a, when did you stop beating your wife kind of comment in there, which I, I just wondered if you wanted it as, as reflecting official correspondence, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Do you want to support Dennis Lamont? Thank you. I see that Dennis Lamont and Al Dwayne are here from the Heritage Trolley System. I know that you have a meeting with State Senator Armbruster on March 18th, and you have asked for support from the Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am, that's right. And I thank the Commissioners for this opportunity. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But as everybody is aware, and believe it or not, there is a rather large clipping service for the transit people, and this letter is, this editorial is all over the internet, for the transit people. And the comments I have, I'm going to, number one, Dennis is going to be constructive today. Number two, the first thing I did is put this in a big file I have for Persons Unclear the Concept. Number three, the second thing I did was call up the Chronicle Telegram and arrange for them to hear our presentation. And we would like to think after the presentation is given, they will modify their views and truly help us, because this is, and we're, we're not joking here, about a county-wide coalition that we showed in our program. There are a lot of people in the county behind this thing. They form the metro parks, they form areas of the county government, the city governments, the Port Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, much bigger than anybody has seen in the past, I think, for a long time on cooperation. We want to continue it. We want to bring a lot of people on board, because there's very few naysayers once they understand the program. We would like to have everybody behind this development opportunity, because we can't waste our time wishing and hoping somebody will save Lorraine County. We have to do it ourselves. I look forward to working with Mr. Cordez and Mr. Ferguson on making public transportation in this county an experience more and more people will enjoy. Just plain numbers, the light rail vehicle passenger count for the country is up 5% for the year. Buses are up 2%, so more and more people are using public transportation. And $2.50 to $3.00 a gallon for gas will certainly help that. Let's give the people a system they can use, let's get a development tool the county can use, and we're off to greater things. That's pretty much all I have to say today, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. I think Mr. Cordez was concerned about, while he can speak himself.
Commissioner, I spoke to Mr. Lamont on Friday after our meeting and explained some comments that I had made to him. My specific concern was that if we were both fishing in the same pond for revenue and resources for our transit, that we may find ourselves as competitors, but that I was no, no way disfavorable of seeing trolley service in Lorraine. I live up in Lorraine, and I'm always favorably inclined to see improvements in the city. My concerns were that if we became competitors, that I would be, you know, very much desires that the board understand that we may take some, potentially take some funding from our own transit system, which is a much broader base system for the county. But that, you know, if we could integrate the trolley service into the transit system, that would be wonderful. Resources are drying up, the money is drying up very rapidly, so I was just concerned that, that we need to continue to make sure that if we're in the same pool, looking at the same funding sources, that we should have a priority on how we, we act for those monies. And, and certainly, we can support more than one initiative, but I, I just want to be keenly aware that, that we don't draw resources from, from the public transportation. It's already a very lean system, as it is. And I think we, we spoke, and I thought we had a very good conversation thereafter.
We're trying to get one and one to equal three, and I think we can do it.
Well, I, I think we can be strategic.
When you figure that out, let me know. I want to know how that's done. Commissioners, do you have any comments, or?
I would just like, Dennis, if you can work with our Transportation Department, Mr. Cordez, so we don't end up competitive, and we work together cooperatively, I believe it's a viable project. Again, the broader base of our transit, you would have to be incorporated with it as part of our master plan, I would hope, and we can forward with it.
That's correct, Commissioner. As a matter of fact, we plan on, as the system grows, we plan on, A, using people from Lorraine County Transit for operators. They will actually be running the service vehicles. And the success of this is based on what they did in Cleveland with the heritage cars
This is not as important as the trolley system, but since I'm from Oberlin, David Ashenhurst and I are not in collusion, I don't agree with him about anonymous letters being noted. If they're going to be not noted, I think you need to develop a policy of what you will and will not let us know about, in terms of the communications you receive. I think that it has some importance to know what communications you get and how you handle it, and I was glad, interested to hear the explanation that Mr. Cordez gave, and I would like to, if you get other anonymous letters that maybe aren't as significant legally, I'd still kind of like to know what they are and how you're handling them. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Anyone else who wants to address the board this morning? Okay. Did you have documentation that you gave to Commissioner Cordez?
Yes, I did. Well, actually, it answered a couple, but I don't think it answered them. I'm not sure that the information was going to be satisfactory. I guess for the record, my understanding from the data I presented to you, that there was no traffic study conducted at the site. It was a request from the school, they're going to use state money and issue two money to pay for the light. They believe there's been an increased amount of traffic there, the school's requesting the light. And I briefed that real quick, I don't know if there's anything-
That 20,000 will come from the county?
That's probably from motor vehicle gas tax. It wouldn't be general fund money for traffic lights.
Give me a chance to talk to Mr. Carney about that before-
Oh, yeah, it's, I think the board put it on hold next week, but since I passed it to you, I just felt compelled to share it, but-
That is the location of some school construction, and I think that's probably why they asked for the light. They contacted me last year regarding where to go channel their questions, so I think they were working with ODOT. Okay. Okay, well, it's not 10:15, so we can't have our alley vacation hearing, and it's not 10:30, so we can't have our Main Street meeting, so you want to recess into executive session for ten minutes also, for the purposes outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor and Administrator?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Commissioners have reconvened, we'll do our 10:15 vacation of a 15-foot alleyway in Aleria Township, which is part of Superior Subdivision and Original Lot Number Five of the Newberry Track. The petition was received on December 13th, 2004 it should be, from Aleria Township trustees with signatures of 10 residents. The petition was forwarded to the county engineer for review, and by letter dated December 22nd, the engineer indicated the description does follow the area the roadway request to be vacated. All notices to vacate were published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 14th and 21st. Notices were sent to the clerk of township trustee and the 10 property owners. The viewing was held on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2005 at 10:00 AM. Also notices were forwarded to Public Utilities, but no response was received from Alta, Ohio Edison, Columbia Gas, or O D N R relating to the easement.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak regarding the proposed vacation of this alley? Okay. I did view that, the alley vacation, with Wayne Malletti from the Lorraine County Engineers' Office. The gentleman was kind enough to shovel off a place for us to park, there was white stuff on the ground that day, fashioned that, and it's an undeveloped alley, and it will help with the houses that are located there, they want to put up a fence, so I see no reason not to vacate it, so having been there, I will make a motion that we approve the vacation as requested.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, our 10:30 appointment is with Main Street Consortium from Amherst, Aleria, Lorraine, Oberlin, and Wellington, welcome. I think each of you has met with the commissioners individually, and we invited you to come back so that the public could hear about the good works that you're doing.
I'll just take a second and let the other managers who are here from the other communities, I'm Kate Reagan with Main Street Aleria, if you guys want to introduce yourselves from afar.
Come on down so you can be on the camera, and so the Lorraine County public can know who's operating on their behalf.
Hi, my name is Teresa Gillis, and I'm the Main Street Director from Amherst.
Mike Epley, and I'm the Director from Main Street Wellington.
Where are you, Mike?
Jeff Cummings with Main Street Oberlin.
Thank you, Jeff. You two are even going to dance.
Bill O'Brien with Main Street Lorraine.
Thank you.
And again, I'm Kate Reagan with Main Street Aleria, and I've been the one who's been nominated to give the presentation to you today. We appreciate your time. And what we're going to do, and hopefully very quickly, we'll try to get you back on schedule, is to give you a presentation of collectively what the five Main Street groups that are members of the consortium have accomplished in 2004. So this is all of our statistics as a whole, as a group, and we'll give you that view. Each, to let you know, each month we do monthly tracking of job creation, new businesses, and different statistics in our area, and so that's what this is a presentation of. First of all, just to indicate to you why Main Streets are important, obviously Main Street and the program that we implement in our communities is a nationwide program, but we feel it's important because it, Main Streets retain and create jobs, which is important, obviously. We're a good incubator for small businesses, our traditional commercial districts are an ideal location for those independently owned businesses. Main Street districts promote tourist attractions, we're historic in nature, and are an attractive location for tourists to visit, and we're a symbol of the economic health and local quality of life and pride in the community history. In this case, we have five communities that are operating these programs that are, to get collectively, and a symbol of the economic health of the county as a whole. In 2004, 29 new businesses were opened in Lorraine County Main Street communities and the districts represented in the five communities. Examples of those included Club West Fitness in Lorraine, Quiznos in Oberlin, and Catherine's Chocolate in Amherst. Obviously, there were several others, but these are just examples of some of those. And in those 29 new businesses, obviously, helped us become a, helped us in being recognized as thriving again. Our downtowns are being recognized, in this case by Lorraine County Business Magazine. Those 29 new businesses created 112 full-time equivalent jobs. So in five communities, there are 102 new employees operating in those, and again, those examples of some of those businesses, Cecil's Truckside Diner in Wellington, this is another example of a wonderful new building and occupying a space that was previously unused. The High Department of Jobs and Family Services Call Center in Lorraine. This happens to be the largest bulk of those 112, with 60 new positions being created in downtown Lorraine. And then the example in Oberlin is, we have three new businesses, this is right on Main Street in Oberlin with Quiznos, Curves, and Nails to Perfection. Again, franchises or small-owned, locally owned businesses that are operating. And this particular building, which, this one doesn't show its, been completely, the facade has been completely redone in this particular building, it's now filled to capacity. There are a number of businesses operating in this space, and a business or building that has tripled its production of income for the community and for the county. Public and private investment in Lorraine County's Main Street exceeded $53 million in 2004. Of course, a large portion of that came from you all with the Justice Center, but there were other major investments that took place in our communities, including Aleria City Hall. Again, that building in Oberlin, major facade improvements and structural improvements there. Downtown Wellington, downtown Oberlin, and downtown Amherst are all operating with Ohio Department of Development Downtown Revitalization Grants, bringing in millions of dollars investment to those three communities. And then we have a number of other examples, including in Lorraine with Charleston Gardens, both residential, government, and commercial, all taking place. We wouldn't be able to do it without our volunteers. 6,000 volunteer hours were donated to Lorraine County Main Street programs with an estimated value, if you take the national average, of $103,000. So our volunteers have basically matched your financial contribution to the Main Street programs with their time, so I think that's really impressive. And I know that the Main Street managers and I couldn't do anything without these volunteers, so their time is very valuable and has had an enormous impact on the communities. They've done things like fill Easter eggs, they've done things like give out brooms and sweep sidewalks, replants and monitor the aesthetic improvements, pop popcorn. It's not all glamorous things that they're doing, obviously. And they've celebrated holidays and other assorted things with the communities and helped to restore that community pride. Project plans for 2005, these are just a touch of some of the things that are planned. Main Street Amherst obviously has the reconstruction of Park Avenue and South Main Street, that's going to be a major reconstruction and major facelift for that community. Main Street Aleria, we're looking at some of the smaller details, some of the major stuff was done in 2004 for us, so we'll be looking at aesthetic improvements, banners, street cleanup, national register markers, just kind of putting some touches on some of the things that were done in 2004. Main Street Lorraine will look to create a special improvement district to help with future funding for their district. Main Street Oberlin, by 2005 and August specifically, they'll have 20 grant projects with an estimated $1.5 million invested in their historic downtown, in the building stock and in public infrastructure. And in Main Street Wellington, 21 buildings will undergo $1.6 million in improvements. And then the important thing to note here is that big and small, they all impact, and our activities have all impacted. While we may not take, we may not be directly responsible for some of the new businesses, we feel that our activities and actions create an atmosphere that's business friendly and it helps encourage business growth. Maybe just some pictures from the various communities that talk about that. So obviously, that's just it. I think our impress, there's fact sheet that is included in your packets there that give you an outline and kind of summarize that. Obviously, we're creating jobs, we're creating new businesses, we're creating income for the county, and we think that it's had a positive economic impact, as well as a quality of life impact for the community. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or invite my colleagues to come up and answer them.
Thank you, Kate, and your colleagues, for the great work that you're doing in our various communities. Commissioners, do you have comments, questions?
I just think that all the Main Streets are doing a wonderful job, and we had talked briefly when we all met about keeping lights up on the Main Streets, and I hope you continue to do that.
Thank you.
Kate?
I'm just happy with the Main Street program, glad to be a member of Lorraine.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
And we thank you again for coming. Jim?
Commissioners, just so you know, we have a staff member on each Main Street from the county assisting with them, not just with funding, but we've, most of our people on Main Street are coming out of the Community Development Department, but in Aleria, we have Karen Davis, and I'm down in Lorraine, and I'm not sure who the members of the other ones are. Brian Barker, I think, is in Wellington, and Oberlin, so we have active involvement with them in addition to the funding to try to gain their assistance and to assist them when we show up for the meetings, right, Bill?
That's correct.
I can say that Karen Davis shows up for every meeting.
Well, see, but I think that comment was directed at Jim.
Mr. Cordez is there enough.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I think that makes a good tie between our Community Development Department, what's going on too, for sharing of information. I like the way you all work together, I think that's very important for sharing. The state legislature thinks we should work together more, I don't think they realize how much we work together presently.
And I think that it's really important, obviously, to reiterate, you all know this, but Lorraine County really sets a statewide model that Main Street managers, of course, are boasting about, because we continue to remain the largest concentration of downtown revitalization and Main Street programs in the state, and as well as we have our county commissioners contributing and actively involved in that, and that's something that's not happening statewide. We continue to be a model for that, from a commissioner's standpoint as well from the managers' programs.
You know what's worked well is the funding stream that we've provided, encouraging by matching with the cities. There was some, there was some lack of support in some of the areas from the cities, but once they were able to access dollars from the county on a one-for-one basis up to a certain amount, they came forward with more funding, so we actually were able to gain duplication of the funding to support you guys, and I think that model's been looked at outside of Lorraine County too, as being able to encourage reluctance as cities to support their Main Street programs.
And we hope you'll see that your investment is well worthwhile, and I think the people, the 112 jobs that these people are working every day, I think they really value your contribution to the Main Street programs and making that happen.
Thank you again, Kate, and your colleagues, we appreciate your attendance today. I think the Commissioners will return to their executive session now, though, even though we talked longer than we should have, we still didn't get done.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash. Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up."
Keep Lorraine County beautiful, put the lid on trash.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geogah and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Rootstown. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeyville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4th, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossin in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossins were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under- under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Elyria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Elyria and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Elyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The County Fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825 established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name LeGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LeGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club,
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning and welcome to the March 17th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. March 17th, as you know, is St. Patrick's Day. I went to Mass this morning at St. Mary's Church, which is our neighbor, and Father Patrick Shields had the Mass. And as it concluded, he gave us the Irish blessing. And he also said, according to the Irish, there are only two kinds of people in the world today, those who are Irish and those who wish they were, or maybe want to be. Ted has approved this comment from Lorraine County leadership, Lorraine County today, so I will say it to you. "Well done is better than well said." Madam Clerk?
At 10:15, there'll be a public hearing on the 15th Alley, Elyria Township, and there will be a presentation at 10:30 for Main Street Consortiums. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advance, there is one advance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Commissioners, we need a executive session at the conclusion of a regular board meeting for the...